She's so happy.
As we're waiting for a minute, I just wanted to mention that I do have a hard stop at 6:30 tonight.
That's probably not a bad thing for everybody. But thanks for letting us know.
It's good to have hard stops.
Yeah. I support that.
I need that when I'm shopping, hard stop.
Sometimes that's a little tough.
I hate shopping, so shopping itself is a hard stop for me.
Your stop before you start, right?
Yeah, I'm a terrible shopper.
Yeah, me too, actually. I'm miserable. Give it another minute here for Dan.
Brooklyn is around. He's just in transit, so he's got the phone, but he's heading to where his laptop is or his charger is.
Mayor Plummer, you want me to text Dan?
Yeah, thanks, just in case he may be running late or something. And, you know, we have a quorum to start at least, so.
Let's need intermission music.
I know, really.
I have the Jaffe thing going through my head. That's. Well, we can motion open and.
Yeah, kind of get us going.
Yeah, let's get started.
Yeah, I make a motion to open the meeting. Is there a second, please?
A second.
Roll call.
Trustee Lamphier.
Hi.
Trustee Liken.
Hi.
Trustee Stetser.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I.
Motion passes.
Okay, so we left off at an exciting moment the last time. And.
It seems so long ago.
I know. Dorothy, do you just want to kind of bring us up to speed and kind of where our narrative is at this point?
Correct. The general budget sheets I sent you haven't changed. They still reflect everything. I went over the previous because we really didn't have any give and take to tell me to really change anything at that point. I included the correct New York State retirement estimate that I had received because I gave you last year's by accident. I also included updated sheets from Zach. I also included Lily's wish list, which we found Lily. So sorry, we missed it. I also included correspondence we received from Hudson Russ with their rates for looking at next year, which I did change in the Excel spreadsheet I sent you. So if you looked at the Excel, if you see I have a little, Justin, you probably caught a little number showing me a negative or positive where I was with balancing, and it shows we have money to spend. In addition, I took my first crack at SURE. So you have the SURE budget along with the SURE Excel I added with the general Excel. Obviously, if everybody looks down below, it shows sewer appropriations and sewer revenues. Okay, so that was what was in the packet. Those are the additionals. I know Zach had sent along the Bartlett tree, and I'm thinking he's here, and let me move him into a panelist so he can speak to the Bartlett tree and why he had that there as well. So. So that's pretty much up to speed of what I've done in the since in the week since we met last. I updated the Excel spreadsheet to reflect a couple of different things. One showing what I was recommending to the board for the budget and one showing what has been expended to date, not to date, to December, because that's the best I can do right now until the accountant works with me on getting January and everything closed and moving forward. So.
So the only question on the expended, and thank you for adding that. Sorry, I'm late, everybody. I had a meeting run long. The only question on that is that is that everything through it's January through January or December?
December.
December. But is it is it also payroll through today?
No, it's payroll through December.
Payroll through December. Okay, got it.
Yep, that's my understanding what's entered in those numbers still have to be entered into the system. So I need to work with the accountant first.
Okay, thanks.
So any questions on the additional stuff? I did include on the Excel sheet a little breakout, taking 25% or 10%, whatever the percentage, looking at what the sewer's reflection of cost for some items I feel would be appropriate to start sharing with sewer. I didn't add that to the sewer accounts in any shape or form or deduct it or add the number to the revenue. I guess I'm a hand speaker. If I'm a hand supplying all over the place here. Until I'm directed to do so. That's just giving you an idea of where that could be pushed to sewer appropriately. Okay. Zach, did you want to talk about, you know, some of the additions that you had in this packet?
Yeah, so we have 27 ash trees throughout the village that are owned by the board. And they get treated for the Emerald Ash Bore every other year. Each tree gets treated every other year. So I currently have a setup with Bartlett tree specialists that they come through and do half the trees one year and the other half the trees the next year. So this year there are 14 trees up for treatment. And before I give them the go ahead to put us on the schedule to do that, this year it is $2,032, which would treat all the ash tree treatments. And then there's an additional charge for the soil care and fertilization for Pin Oak at the church on Lincoln in Washington, and then an additional charge for for the oak tree on Fountain. So I guess my question to you guys would be how much pesticides do you want to use in continuing treatment for the ash trees versus taking them down? The previous administration was for, you know, continuing the treatments for as long as it was necessary until the tree shown too much, you know, the life of the tree was too far gone at that point. So I just need direction from you guys.
Zach, do you, I'm not a tree expert. Can you just keep, will they stay alive as long as you keep treating them every two years? Or is, do they degrade even while you treat them?
They can degrade while you treat them. It all depends on how effective it is for killing off the Emerald Ash Bore for the treatments. Once the tree starts, it seems once the tree starts to really show some signs of decay, that the tree is most likely going to just die away at that point.
Well, then I guess really the other question would be, is there an assessment made? We have 14 trees on the schedule up for treatment. Is there an assessment made of the status of the trees? And are they worth treating? Are they maybe stressed or compromised? Is there a way to ascertain that before we spend those funds?
Not necessarily before they'll go through and do an assessment as they treat the tree. And if the tree looks like it's too far gone at that point, they will let me know that the tree is, it's too far gone. And treatment isn't really going to do anything to prolong its life.
And they've done that in the past?
Yes.
Okay, so it's all part of a actually more comprehensive program than just the application. There's testing.
Yeah, there are some residents that don't want the pesticides in the tree properties. So that's why I feel it's a board decision to go through with a, using the pesticide.
I wonder if there's an interim sort of plan where we phase out some of them and plant some new ones so that we're not doing them all at once, or, you know, if we're prolonging their life and they all start dying around the same time, that would be bad. To, you know, have a lot of trees gone. I don't know if there's a slow, slow way to start integrating some new trees and take one or two of them down that are in the worst shape, or I realize we can't, we're not in a place to discuss that tonight because we don't have all the information, but I don't know the best way forward.
Do have three of the trees, three ash trees scheduled for removal.
Okay, but not three of the 14 you're talking about?
Uh, no, those were already off the list. But next year we can reassess and see about taking another one or two down. That probably a bad idea to, to do that because ultimately in the end, they are going to die off. As once, once they're infected, it's hard to bring them back. It's just prolonging.
Okay, you know who else I'm thinking of just as a resource would be our friend from Deck Forestry, Gary Copeland. Or I can't, I can't remember his last name properly. I'm wondering if it'd be worth reaching out to him and talk with him about the program that we've been using, and maybe he could help with even evaluating the trees as well.
Perhaps.
Yeah.
You hate to take trees down. I'm all for doing everything you can to, you know, for as long as you can.
Some of these trees are very large and old, so you lose a lot of candy when you take your tree down.
Beautiful, yeah. And you need the decision tonight?
Well, I should to get on the schedule, and there is a timeframe that we're working with to have the trees treated. There's time that you're supposed to treat the trees. Just to make sure that we're on the schedule and the right timeframe, it would be best to get on the schedule as soon as possible.
Well, we do have a meeting on Thursday. I'm wondering if we couldn't make just a couple of quick calls like to, you know, as I'm saying, maybe to Gary, see if he could just swing by, talk, talk through the program with him. You know, because he's just an unbiased professional from Deck. You know, in other words, we're treating trees that are eventually going to die. Is that what I'm hearing? I'm just trying to understand that because I don't know that much about it.
Once, once they're, once they're infested, it's hard bringing them back. And it also depends, I'm not a tree expert, but from what I've gathered, it also depends on whether the tree is showing signs of dying back. And the couple that I've seen that have showed, you know, 75 or 25% of tree growth dying back, at that point, they're, they're far enough gone to consider them.
And how long have we been implementing the program?
As long as I can remember.
Okay.
This was in place before I took over superintendent.
Okay, okay, you know, just so we understand kind of, you know, where we've been going with this. I mean, I'm not averse to doing, you know, with a program, but I just want to make sure we're having the trees properly assessed before we're spending the money.
Sure.
Yeah. So I mean, frankly, you know, just based on what I'm hearing, I'd like to at least defer until our Thursday meeting. Does that make sense for the rest of the board? You know, just maybe to make a few more calls, get a little more information. Yep, okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, yeah. All righty, what else, Zach?
That's really the only new thing that I'm bringing to the board tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Now that we talked about Thursday before I forget and we get lost in other conversation, how does the board feel? They were waiting till after the first to make a decision whether we're going to be virtual or in person. I need to post the meeting, so I need a little instruction from the board as to where we stand.
Yeah, does anybody have any thoughts on that? I mean, I'm good either way with whatever the board, you know, desires. Yeah, Lily, did you have your hand up? Yeah.
I did. Isn't it also driven by state? The state has determined that it's no longer necessary, and that we're not permitted to meet virtually unless we're in a state of emergency?
Um, the state extended it to March 15th, so I think it's still in, it's still in place. So you can comfortably meet on the 10th. But it's.
I'd want us to talk about that at the public meeting. I don't like adding things to these budget meetings if we can help it. So we've got a meeting, we had planned for it to be virtual. I would think, let's just go with it as virtual for Thursday. We'll talk about it then.
Well, I think the question was, do we want to have the meeting virtually Thursday or in person? I think, was that the question?
That's my question.
Okay, and that's what I just answered.
Okay, so it's going to be virtual.
That, that's what I would think.
Okay.
Because I don't, I don't want to talk about things that aren't the budget here unless it's an emergency. This doesn't seem to be an emergency.
Well, it's a publicly noticed meeting, first of all, and this is an administrative action. So we're just trying to.
I just want to know.
Just wanted to kind of get engaged because she has to make a posting, that's all.
The board had said they'd make that decision as of course, so I'm just.
Okay, so we're virtual. Okay.
Okay. Okay. So moving forward, I think where would the board like to start? I can bring up the budget sheet or the spreadsheet, which would you?
Should we bring up, what do you guys think?
The budget? Or the share, or the Excel?
Excel. Start with that because you guys seem to be tweaking and tuning on that.
Okay.
Either way, it's fine.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I just thought it just to say something. I don't know, it could be either way. We're looking at all of it.
Sorry, it always takes me a minute to.
Yeah.
Well, while you're pulling that up, Zach, I had one other question about the, the material that you had included. So it looks like there's different vehicle and possibly sewer related items that are added there. Are those the top priorities of the respective funds, you know, so vehicles and equipment? Or what are you, what are you looking for there? And what's the, the idea behind that presentation? Are those things we definitely need or what?
Refresh, I don't have the packet in front of me, so.
Oh, sure. There is, there's kind of a flush head or something for a couple thousand. There are a couple of different options you had there. There's a paint center, power liner, the Honda engine, there's the Bobcat, and there is another. Let's see, was it, there's a hot haythorn push camera, 10 grand. And then there's something else that was slightly more 150,000 or something for another. Was it sewer equipment?
Is that the flush truck?
Yeah, I guess that's the flush truck, right?
Yes, so the only thing, so you have the tool cat, which is the $77,000 quote, I believe, and after all, the discounts and trade in value, I think it was at $51,000.
Yeah, 53.
53. Sorry, I'm trying to find my meeting.
That's okay. No, I've got, I'll call it out for you if you need it.
It's not on the website, Zach. I sent it to you.
I'm going through the last packet that you sent to me.
Yeah.
All right, so the paint, the RPC, Rasha Paint Center, the power line at 3500 is a paint sprayer. That's what we use for spraying the lines on the roads and all the parking stalls. The one that we currently have, the pump is starting to fail on it, and it starts to do like scalloping hourglass paint line. So this is to replace that. That would be general.
So I guess, Zach, just, I don't want to go too far down a rabbit hole here, but I was just wondering, so in terms of the overall budget, are these the, are these must haves? Or how are we supposed to interpret these in terms of setting aside an amount of appropriations in different categories?
Yeah, so everything that I, that would be up here is a must have at this point. Toolcat is in bad enough shape that I very much, you know, it's a safety issue for us, so I would like to replace that. The paint machine, if you guys want good straight lines on the roads, then that is a must have. The flush truck is kind of up in the air right now because currently our flush truck is out getting repaired, and it probably will work well enough. And I'm having a hard time justifying spending, you know, close to $300,000 on a new truck that would probably be used for two, 300 hours out of a year. But would, you know, serve the purpose of making sure that any issues with the sewers that came up would be, we'd be able to address them in a safe way. That's, so that's, the flush truck is to be determined, I guess. And if the budget supports it, I don't see why, you know, we couldn't do it. It's just that, that factor of the justification for the, for the expense.
Is, is that on the spreadsheet at all? And do we have, we don't have anything that we're trading in for that, right? So it would just be an outright expense rather than something where we're recouping costs from a sale?
We could send our, there, there would be some, some money back either through, through auction of our current flush truck or traded in, but it's going to be minimal at this point. Mostly the value of the truck is just the cab and the chassis. And I'm guessing that's probably going to be somewhere around 15 to 20,000 dollars at best, to go against the, the 300 or so $1,000 for the, for the new flush truck.
So, so Zach, you know, just, just for everybody here, by the time you're putting in, you know, forwarding this to the board, you've gone through really a much larger list of all the possibilities of equipment and other things, and you've sort of pared it down to really where the, you know, the kind of the must haves.
We've already spinned out everything that I brought during our pre-budget meetings. You know, there was another dump truck that I'd put in there for to replace truck one and truck two, which is an oh, oh, four and oh, eight respectively. And those were wiped off because those are large purchases also. Each one of those trucks is about a $240,000 replacement right now. And, you know, just after the last few budget cycles that we've had, it's bare bones that I bring to the table at this point. So this is just, this is stuff that needs to be replaced.
Yeah. Now, that, that's helpful, I think, for all of us to understand that what really what we're looking at from you is really, you know, iterations, you know, with, with you and the crew and, you know, saying this is kind of really where we're at.
Yep.
Okay, okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Just, just to continue on, to answer your question, Justin, the, so the sewer truck would be a sewer funding expense, and I'm not sure we're quite up to that yet doing sewer fund budget talks, but the other quote from Singtime is for a push camera, and that is a smaller camera that would be able to do some camera work in our sewers. That would pay for itself pretty quick, but it does have limited use because it's a small camera versus a $100,000 robot camera that is typical for getting good visual representation of what's going on inside of our sewers.
And would that be something then that we would bring in Scanex for us or a company like that to look at?
Yeah, so we usually lean on Scanex, a lot of the camera work or the town when they have the time to assist us because they have both means of a smaller handheld push camera and also the robot camera. So they've helped us out a lot in the past, so we do lean on them. This is just a means for us to, you know, to give them a break more.
Sure, so we have a smaller camera at least to tackle some of the others. Okay.
Yes, and then there's a couple nozzle heads that we're looking at that work for cleaning out roots instead of having to use a saw, which is prone to getting stuck in sewers. This is a root cutter that works off of the, the water jets that actually go through and cut the roots up just as well as a saw would. It's just a little safer to use in the sewers. You don't have that risk of it getting stuck. So that's why I put it on there. And they're, they're larger expenses, so, you know, I just figured I'd have the quote I'm ready to have as a reference.
Okay.
So that is your question.
Yeah, that, that is very helpful. I guess I understand that you're still working on updating the, the spreadsheet, and I would still like to, in order to, I understand these are must haves, but in terms of distilling this into an appropriation category and figuring out how much money we need for it, I'd still like to see how this impacts the, the next few years to spend, you know, kind of getting closer to a multi-year capital plan for, for these large expense items rather than looking at the particulars.
Sure.
I'm with you. Okay, what else?
I guess we're ready to continue. Is there any area the board wants to discuss?
Dan? Yeah.
Yeah, so I thank you for these numbers. They're really helpful. And it's wonderful having the actuals there as well. So really kudos to you for pulling that off. My biggest question is, is around the personnel costs and the increases there. Because it's our biggest expense. And when I crunch the numbers, can I share my screen really quickly?
Sure. Oh, I might need to hold on. Okay, should be able to.
Want to make sure I have this right. Okay, so here we go. Continue. Okay, are you seeing this?
Yeah, thanks.
So what I did was I, I took the, anything in here, so these are the appropriations, right? I took anything in here marked Personnel Services. So Mayor Village Board down there, and, and I totaled them for our current budget and for your recommendations. That makes sense? I have these columns, right? That's our current budget. That's our recommendations. And when I did that, that's this top part here. So our current budget, everything Personnel Services is 488K, and the proposed budget goes up to 549. That's a 13% increase. What, what's interesting to me as well is that I did the same thing in the sewer as well. So in the sewer, we were at 112K in Personnel Services, and that's in two places, Street Maintenance and Sewer Admin. And that then goes to 162 because you're then taking a portion of these and putting in sewer. And that represents a 44% increase. And overall, when you add the two together, you've got our budgeted Personnel Services between sewer and then everything else, Office Staff, DPW, everything, was 601 for this current budget here, and it goes up to 712, which is a big jump. So I want to make sure I have those numbers right. Did I miss something in here? Were there, you know, where was Mary's?
What you're missing is, Dan, we had budget, we changed the guy salaries last year, if you remember, we gave them a big increase, and we gave Brooklyn an increase. So we've had increases in staff that wasn't anticipated at the time the budget was adopted. So the number you're seeing for the budget that was adopted in 2021 doesn't reflect those increases.
Does Mary as a contractor, does hers appear in something other than Personnel Services?
No, it, it's in the treasure Personnel Services.
Okay.
So should we run this with the first, I like how you presented this, Dan. This is really helpful. Should we run the, the column to the left with the amended budget going forward? So it's a more accurate reflection?
It's kind of hurt, well, the amended budget.
I know where you're going, Dan, but how do we?
It's, but, you know, I think there's another, here we go, the battling of the spreadsheet. I can bring up the wage sheet, which shows is what I used with the current wages plus the additional cost of living to get my numbers.
Okay, but, but we're looking at an 18% increase over where we were a year ago, when, when we budgeted a year ago, which, which is a really big number.
Correct, because there was that bigger increase we did when we did the, the guys in between. So what I did is the 6.5 because of the cost of living and everything else, that factor. So what I did is the six point five because of the cost of living and everything else, that factor.
So if you notice, we could look at it, we could see what percentage increase.
Yes, I can.
Would reflect.
Yes, because the budget, what I can do is take.
What's our current run rate?
That's a good question. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, let me show you the spreadsheet. Uh, Jeff is here, Mayor Palmer. Did we want to talk about that other issue or you want to?
Yeah, you know, we, we just wanted, um. Thank you for joining us, Jeff. Um, we just wanted Jeff to join us because, you know, we wanted to talk a little bit about the reserve funds. Justin, I know you had some questions about that. And Jeff had done work, uh, with Tim Galley, uh, many years ago in two thousand fourteen. It's known as the Galley Plan going forward and really identifying reserves that have been put in place many, many years ago. And. You know, just what, what the language was and whether or not we could actually access these reserves because at this point, um. We are not able to access those reserves. Um, we don't have the. The correct language, I guess, is the best way and how to say it. Um, and it was noted by the controller in, you know, one of the more recent audits. Um, so I was wondering, you know, I asked Jeff just to join us, just to kind of give us an overview of the work that had been done and where we are now. And, um, the goal of this is really to have the board tonight give direction, um, to Jeff. And also to our treasurer to, as we go forward, to, um, review the work done to date on these reserves. And make recommendations to the board in terms of maybe, uh, possible change of language. So we can access these funds, the funds. Going forward because, um, we have a significant amount of tax, taxpayer money tied up in these reserves almost. I guess between all of them, what, what, what was the amount you had roughly, Dorothea? She.
Oh, I'm going to amend that number I gave you.
Okay.
Um.
Either, either way, it's significant and, um. We need to make sure that, you know.
We have, we have about five hundred and ninety thousand dollars stuck in reserves right now that we really can't access and use. In the way it was intended. Because we really don't have the language there to allow us to access it, is my understanding from everything I've been told.
Right. And so, um, part of this, part of this direction, um, that I would like us to, to give to Jeff and to our treasurer is, um. To have an understanding of the current languages that exist and why we cannot access those funds and what we need to do. Um, moving forward. Um, to either amend the language so we can, uh, redirect the funds properly. So we can access them going forward. Um, again, this is taxpayer money that's been tied up literally for decades. Um, so I think this is, this is really important. We need to, to, to move on it. Jeff, did you want to add anything just in general about reserve funds and what would happen, you know, once we review the language and maybe you come back with recommendations and. What, what would that look like for us to, to go through that process of, of amending, um, a reserve on the language? Uh, how does that process play out? Just so we all understand that.
That will depend on what we think we have. That, the number that Dorothea just. Gave us is way different than what I have from. Twenty fourteen, when this was first discussed.
Okay.
So I, I guess the first step is to th- find out. What she thinks we have. In reserve funds. Determine. What they are, whether that's repair or capital. And whether their repair capital will. Uh, determine. How we move them to where they ought to be. So it's, it's sort of a, a three-step process. What do we have? What are they? And what do we need? Um. I guess I was operating under the assumption that. Most of our money was in unreserved funds. Which is the problem the controller had.
There was two problems. One, we had the reserves set up, but we didn't have the proper language to access those reserves. And then we had too much in unreserved funds in addition. So. So it was a two-part issue.
So the, so back in twenty fourteen, the thought was. That we would come out of this with. In the general fund, a refer, a repair fund. A capital. Type fund. And a retirement fund. And then in the sewer fund, we would come out with. A rare repair fund. A capital fund and a retirement fund. Um. In the sewer fund, there's a repair Wood Creek. Fund. That sort of needs to be repurposed, I think, but. That's all dependent on what. Our investigation would show is currently there. So once you decide what it is. You want. Then how you move it in. Is the important piece of this. And that is. Uh, repair funds. Can be moved in by resolution. Um. Taken out. By resolution on five days' notice. Um, a public hearing by, a resolution by public hearing on five days' notice. Um, the capital. Uh. Reserve fund. Is. If it's a type. Then it goes in by permissive referendum. The perfect example of that. Is the proposal. For the, the sewer failure fund. That's a type. You move it in by cap, by a permissive referendum. But you can get out by resolution if you need it quickly. Um. The reserve. Or the type. Is. The opposite virtually. So you, you move it in by resolution. And getting it out is, is by permissive referendum. So. That's kind of an overview of where we are. It's probably pretty certain. That none of the funds. That we know as of, as revert, reserve funds. Were properly constituted at the beginning. And that's a question of getting it. Setting it up correctly. So you know how to access it.
Okay. So that's, that's part of the work that needs to be done with these existing funds.
Correct.
Okay. Yes, Justin.
Sure. Um, I, I have some questions about this. So are you talking about, um, I, I understand that there are. Uh, or there could be, we, we've got two main, uh, sources of our, um. Uh, two main documents for our budget here. We've got the general fund and we've got the sewer fund. Um, are you talking about these problems existing in the reserve funds in both of those categories or just one?
I assume both. I, I assume that. Um, they are not constituted the way the board would want them to be constituted.
Okay, um.
Or, or it may be that. For instance. I'm not sure why Tim was focusing on. The Wood Creek, Wood Creek Repair Fund. But he seemed to think that needed to be defunded. And I'm not sure why he thought that.
Do you? I, I still have several questions here, I guess. So we have a, a balance sheet. From the general fund that was provided to us, um, from the, uh, from late last year, uh, that I think was in our packet from January or, or February. Um, so we know what's in the, the funds, I, the reserve funds, I believe, for the general fund. Um, don't we? Or is there still some ambiguity about how much we have in the different funds?
Dorothy, can you jump in and explain? Yeah.
So there's no ambiguity what's in the fund. It's my, the, the one reserve in the village. My understanding with the balance sheet is the one fund, it's like a hundred and sixty-four thousand. The problem is we can't access it because of the language. So it's just sitting there on the books. So we can't touch it. We can't use it and we don't know what we can use it for. And we don't know how to get it if we wanted to use it. So this has been an ongoing problem. And don't get me, if, and if I'm not wrong, the budget board, we discussed this maybe last year as well. That we needed to get this cleared up because if we had an emergency, we needed to access that fund, we couldn't do it. So we really needed to straighten it out so we could use it if needed. So it was available. Right now it's not available to us because my understanding, not just with the general fund, but with the sewer fund, it's all language and we can't ex, any. Access any of these funds.
So, so just so if I'm, because I, I, thanks for this question, Justin, because just to, so I'm understanding this. These funds have existed or have been set up. Quite a long time ago. And they have simply been carried forward each year with each buzz budget with an inability to access the funds as needed. Okay, so they're, they're existing and just carried forward. They just hang out. For whatever, you know. Okay. And then the other, the other question is, and this was a discussion you and I had earlier. Um, is that there is a lot, there are lines in the budget to still fund, for some funds to be funded. But they don't exist and money has been appropriated each year for this.
Well, starting last year's budget, when I was entering the numbers, I mimicked everything Mary did last year to stay consistent. So the board. You know, I didn't throw any wildness at the board here. And I funded the reserves similar to as she funded them last year, but I noticed there was two additional reserves in comparison to what is in. The paperwork. That would be, it looks like an equipment reserve and a facilities reserve. Those reserves don't exist. We, the board hasn't established those reserves, so we can't fund them because they don't exist. The other problem I see is we're throwing money into reserves that we can't access. So we're tying up more money we can't touch. So I think appropriate measure until all those. Reserves are resolved in. You know, we know how we can get to our funds is to not fund them. I would say a board should approve an amendment for like the sewer fund for me to move the intended funds to go into those reserves into. Uh, contingency. That way it'll just fund right back into the fund balance. And then you can reallocate it at another time when you have all your resource established and cleaned up.
And we would have access to it through that, that fund balance.
Correct.
As opposed to just putting it, yeah, okay. Yes, Dan.
What are our, what do our auditors say about doing that?
The accountants?
Yeah.
Um. I haven't had the discussion on the reserves with the accountants. I, I do have a phone call out to him or an email out to him, hoping he can attend our meeting on Thursday. To review things with the board. Um. We can ask them.
Jeff, this is, this is helpful to know the clerk and the lawyers take. I'll also want to know an accountant's take.
Yeah.
A part of the work in twenty fourteen was. Um, subject to the accountant approving how, you know, what we're doing.
Sure. Yep. Okay, Justin, yes.
Um, so you're, you're saying that these funds are, are totally inaccessible. Do we not have access to the original language in the referendum to establish those funds? Which are currently capitalized? Is, is that just missing entirely? Or do we have something and it's not entirely appropriate for how we may want to use those?
I think it's, I think it's a combination of things. I think when the resolutions were done or when it was established, and I don't know how far back, or at one point some reserves were combined. It's the language or it was too vague. It's not clear. So it. It's not. It is, am I wrong, Jeff? I'm, that's my understanding.
Exactly what I was going to say. It's a combination of both. Uh, for instance, one of the repair reserve funds. Was set up as really a capital replacement fund. So the repair, the, the sidewalk repair fund. Um, when it was set up discusses sidewalk replacement. Which is not. I don't think the same thing. Um. I saw how you access that. Given that we're not sure whether it's a repair fund. Um. Or a capital fund. Makes a difference.
And it does to the controller. In other words. How we, how we create that fund, how we, um, the language that we use to describe how the funds will be used. Um, is something that the, the controller looks at. So, you know, I'm all for, um, cleaning this up. We need to. Yes, Justin.
Yeah. So I, I had some questions about this too, and I, I just, um, I called up Mary, um, since she has some context on, on how these were, were handled. Um, so I talked to her this afternoon, um, and she explained it, uh, I, I, I think in similar, um, terms to what you're describing. She has said that. Um, this is something that, uh, has been noted for improvement for years and years. Um, well, she described to me and I'll, I'll just share it with everybody for, um, for reference here, since she has a, uh, an important, uh, store of knowledge about how things were done. Um, she said that, uh, in the sewer fund, um. They, some of those things go back to the thirties and forties, I think she said. Um, you know, we're, we're talking about really, really old, uh, reserves. So the, the language there is certainly different than what we're going to do today. So. She said there, uh, you know, and, and there might be differences in, in the particular, uh, resolutions, but. It's not that the money is totally inaccessible. It's that the language might not match, uh, what we want to use it for. Uh, pretty much as, as Jeff was, was saying a moment ago. Um, she mentioned the example possibly of, uh, an equipment reserve that, um, allowed us to use it for repair, but not for replacement. Um, and so I, I think that in that light, what I would like to see is, um, you know, certainly I, I would agree that it sounds like there's something to be cleared up here. I would like to see what the language is for all these funds. So whatever documentation we've got in the funds, I would like to see that provided to the board, um, or at least to me. And, you know, I'd be happy to. Um, to do some legwork and, and try to figure out what we have. Cause it, it doesn't, from speaking with her, it doesn't sound like they're inaccessible in as much as there's cleanup work to be done and, uh, it might not give us as much access as we would like.
Let's clarify this though, um, because I think you're, you're, um. Inaccessible. I mean, maybe it's the wrong word that we're using. The money can be taken out. I think perhaps the issue is. Once the money's taken out, regardless of whatever the languages that choose to describe. What it's to be used for. And we say, okay, we think we understand that language and we're going to use the money. Our understanding is that there is the possibility and a strong possibility being flagged by the controller because the language. May not match up. So it's not about, you know, gee, we can never touch it. It's that when you take the money, you trigger. You know, you trigger the flag from Albany. Um, am I, am I correct in that, Dorothy or Jeff? Cause I know you, you both have been doing work on that, that. You know, the money's there. Obviously you could take it out, but how do we know what we're using it for?
Yeah, we just don't have the appropriate language to use it. It, that's why I'm saying it's inaccessible. Until that's corrected, it wouldn't be recommended to touch it. It just. It will cause a problem.
And it hasn't been, it hasn't been even, I don't believe even if I.
This is.
Even during Mary's tenure or, or, you know, for years.
No, and Mary provided, this is research she's done. I haven't had time to go through this. I think Jeff has this, this is all gathered, I guess, back in two thousand fourteen. I mean, I'll be happy to make a copy of it, putting it in the packet, uh, if the board wants it, I'll be happy to. I mean.
Yeah, I, I would, uh, I would really appreciate a copy of that. I mean, it, it sounds like it, it's a matter of the, uh, it sounds like we're on the same page. There's a matter of the language that was used to establish the reserve. So let's read the language and, and, and sure, let's, let's go ahead and clear it up, but.
It's, it's additionally, you know, reading the language, understanding, you know, okay, you know, bringing clarity, but we also then have the opportunity. As a board in two thousand twenty-two, if something was decided in nineteen seventy-four, for example. To amend and repurpose that money with the proper language in a, in a reserve going forward. And I think that's an important point for all of us. You know, because it's a significant amount of money that we're looking at, this taxpayer funds. Um, I still think it's important that we entertain a motion, I will entertain a motion to direct our, yes, Jeff.
But we've been through all the paperwork. And you will not find a lot of clarity.
Yeah. I've looked at some of it. It's.
If you can, that's great because that would be very, very helpful. To, to figure out where we are. But it's, it's somewhat unclear.
Yeah, I think that's a fair statement. I've looked at some of it myself. Um. But I would entertain a motion from the board to direct, uh, Jeff, working with our treasurer and any other, um. You know, professional advice that they feel they need to, uh, go back in, uh, pick up where this work was done in two thousand fourteen. And, uh, come back with the board for recommendations with, uh. Language for these reserves.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second that. Uh, for discussion.
Okay, back for discussion. Yes, Justin?
So my understanding was that in two thousand fourteen, this is part of the, the Galley Plan as, as you said, and, and, um. Uh, I've looked through parts of the Galley Plan and, and spoken with, uh, Trustee Cali, and, and I know that he made a bunch of, uh, great contributions in terms of, uh, organizing things for the village. That was done by a, a member of the board. Um, so far I have not seen the, uh, the language. It sounds like there's some lack of clarity here. That was done by a, a member of the board. Um, so far I have not seen the, uh, the language. It sounds like there's some lack of clarity here. I'm sure I'm not gonna find all the information in that packet. Um, but I would propose that we give the board an opportunity to look at the material. Um, and figure out what we might be, uh, wanting to do before we give direction to an attorney, which could end up being pretty costly.
Um, I, for discussion purposes, I, I'd much rather have the experts weigh in on this. The accountants and the, and the lawyers, there are times to spend money and, and, uh. They're much closer to experts in this area, in this field than we are. So that's, that gets my vote.
I, I agree with that. May I ask what the urgency is to do that at this meeting, rather than allowing us to review the material and, uh, talk about this at a, a subsequent meeting?
Uh, well, I know that this has been circling back with this board for a number of years, clearly since two thousand nineteen or eight years in. Anybody can review this material anytime. Dorothea, you can send it right out tomorrow to everybody. Everybody can review it concurrently. And I think that's a good idea that everybody sees what currently exists and, um, also has an opportunity to see the lack of clarity. Um, so I, I, I support that. Um, I don't think that one is mutually exclusive of the other. I think we certainly can move forward and should move forward. Um, it's been a number of years and, um, I think it's in the best interest for the taxpayers because there's a lot of money tied up. And there might be money, funds that we can repurpose, you know, amend, amend the language, repurpose the use and move forward. And, uh, properly spend when we need the money from those repurposed and amended reserves.
Can, can I ask a, a question about the, um, wh- what is the deliverable that we're looking at from our attorney and our accountants out of this? Is it, is it, uh, clarified language? Is it a proposal for different reserve funds or something else?
Then we'll come back to the board with a recommendation to amend, amend the language and we could discuss then. How as a board, we would want to repurpose the funds, you know, they could. We, they could even amend the language of the existing funds and then we could make a decision. Am I correct, Jeff? That we can make a decision whether it's, it's an accurate reflection of what we need in twenty twenty-two going forward with that reserve.
My view of this is that Dorothea would, and I would look at what we have. Um, look how we think it got there.
Okay.
And I would think we would wanna repurpose. Everything to make sure that we're starting at a good baseline.
Mm-hmm.
And the accountant would tell us if we're doing anything wacky.
Yep. So, yeah, so, you know, as Dan said earlier, and I, I, I think, you know, Dan, your points are, are well put that. You know, we're, we're working with a group here of professionals that can, um. Guide us through this with the proper language and how we would amend the uses going forward, and I support that as well.
I would just quickly point out, there is limitations. If a certain reserve was set up a certain way and we can go to certain subjects, so we can't be. We can't suddenly say, okay, this reserve, we wanna move it to this other crazy thing. We wanna build flower beds on Main Street. It has to go to certain types, certain type of reserves can only go to a certain different type, and that's all set by the controllers, so.
Right, and so, but if you were to, yes, Jeff.
That's dependent on what kind of a fund we think it was originally.
Correct.
Some, some can go. Uh. Depending on what it is, it can go anywhere the board thinks it needs to go. Uh, some cannot. So the goal is to, to decide. What kind of reserve funds we need. And decide which of the current funds that we have can go where.
Right, and so it really is, I mean, no matter what, I think what this board is hearing this evening is that this really needs to be sorted out. Um, in a definitive manner, so this board will be able, based on the recommendations of the professionals, make. Make decisions about how we repurpose, amend, or. Uh, amend the language of an existing fund that maybe can't be touched in a certain way or repurpose. That we may or may not have all those options, but this will, and if I'm to understand this, will come back in the recommendation to the board. Yes, I'm getting nuts. Okay, yeah, that's great. Thank you. Yes, Justin.
Uh, so my, my understanding and, and to use a, a term that, um, that Jeff used a moment ago. Uh, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong here, but you said that part of the recommendation could be to repurpose everything. Um, and what we're looking at there is about seven hundred thousand dollars or so. Um, that is in these different reserve funds that, based on my initial assessment of the balance sheet, most of this is on the, the sewer fund side of, of the equation. Um, and those, uh, those reserves are large, largely correspond with the kinds of work that we wanna do with the sewer system. Um, as a new board member, I have not seen the language for those, uh, those reserves and how they're constituted. Um, we, I understand that's there in paper copy. I'd like to take a look at that. Um, I don't see the urgency to do this at this meeting. Um, I also don't have a clear vision yet of the, uh, the scope of work and what this might cost us. Um, to have our, our council undertake this, uh, this research. So I would, um, postpone this, uh, until a further date. When we've had time to review the material and look at a more precise proposal from our council.
Thank you for that. Um, we've had our discussion. We do have a motion with a second. Yes, Renee? Something or a question?
Jeff, do you have an idea, um, how many hours this would take? Is this a simple task or?
I don't think it's a simple task.
Okay.
Um. And really. You don't. The attorney part of this is. What do we have? What do you want it to be?
Yep.
Which could be fairly simple. If I'm gonna be involved in. Trying to figure out what we have and why, how that's justified. And I think that's a bigger, bigger job. I think it'd be very difficult to quantify it, but I will point out that I don't think. That the bulk of the funds in the sewer fund are reserved. And I don't think the bulk of the funds. In the general fund are reserved, but I could be wrong. I mean, that, then, that has changed since twenty fourteen, if that's the case.
This sounds like we need to discuss, because I'm just going from balance sheets and what I understand, it's on the budget and says the word reserve. So in my mind, when it was established, it was established, so.
I, I'm looking at a repair reserve fund. In twenty fourteen. That was about a hundred and eighteen thousand bucks. And unreserved cash at that time was six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That's in the general fund. In the sewer fund, I'm looking at unreserved cash of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And I'm looking at a re, re, a repair. Um, reserve of fourteen. A capital vehicle of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. And a repair wood creek for thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, I have totally different numbers.
So, so those. Are what we had in twenty fourteen. And I'm not certain how, what the changes.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna bring, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring just a really quick question for this board. Do we all agree that this is, this really does need to be sorted out and addressed? We have had work done eight years ago on funds that have been established decades prior. And we still don't have any answers. We need, I, I firmly believe we need to take action. I think it's in the best interest of our village. And it's a, it's fiscally responsible if we have sick five hundred and ninety thousand dollars out there. With inappropriate language where we can't access the funds. I think it's, it's, it's important that we do take action on this. Yes, Dan.
Yeah, given that no transition was done from Mary to the current treasurer. Um, I'm, I'm all, and there's nobody I would trust more to do this work than Jeff and Dorothea with some input from our accountant. So I, I don't know what, I, I, I think we just need to green light this work. This, this is the cost of doing business. This is something we need to do.
Yeah, it's in the, I think it'll be money well spent to be able to repurpose and properly utilize these funds.
Yeah.
Okay, um, yes, Jeff.
I mean, I mean, if trustee like it could, wants to take the time, you know, to, to start looking at this.
Sure.
And then wants to, to tell Dorothy and I what he thinks happened. I mean, that, that could help a lot.
That'd be great. I mean, I think we should all get copies of that. I have one, so don't make a copy for me, but. You know, that way we all, we all understand what's out there, you know, what the starting point really is. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, um, roll call.
Okay, trustee like him?
No.
Trustee Lanfair.
I.
Trustee Stetzer.
I.
Trustee Keating.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
I.
Motion passes.
Okay.
I think, may I clarify?
Yes, yes, sure.
I'm sorry, I should have done it before the vote. Um, so the first step here is to ascertain. Are we talking about five hundred and ninety thousand? Are we talking about two hundred and seventy-five thousand? Or as Jeff thought, a hundred and eighteen thousand?
Right.
So we've got some different figures here, and I think that would be step one. And that's what, that's what I'm interested in, in hearing. Where did it go? Where did it go to five hundred and ninety?
I'm taking numbers from the trial balance, from other things, so I will get together and we'll compare our numbers and go over where he has his numbers. And what I think is a reserve and what isn't a reserve, and we'll let the board know.
Well, so none of these are my numbers.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So.
Numbers you have.
What's, the, the numbers I have, the source material was the same, or the source was the same. But I, but to, to amend Lily's thought. Uh, yeah, it's important to decide or figure out what we have. But in terms of, uh, trustee like gives assistance, it's also critical to know what we think they are. So that's a real big piece of this.
Okay.
Right, a- any other thoughts, Lily? Oh, okay, Dan, yep.
Um, the second part of this that we'll wanna get to as more part of the budgeting is. How we manage our contingency fund and what's the right amount of money to put into them each year, and that will be a really important part of the discussion too. I, I just wanna make sure we don't lose sight of that as well, and that that is addressed as part of this.
And that, that's more a treasurer's role than an attorney's role.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, thanks.
Okay, so we're, we're sort of clear on, you know, at least where, where we're going forward now with the reserves. Jeff, thank you so much for joining us. Uh, do you have any other questions for Jeff before we release him into the night?
And, and trustee like, if I was, you know, if, if you glean anything, Dorothy, are you gonna email, mail, email that stuff out?
I'll send it to everybody. It's really great.
That's not the source.
Don't send it to me.
Is that the source material, Dorothea?
This is what Mary gave me related to the reserves. So this is copies and minutes and bank accounts. There's a bunch of.
All right, can you make sure I've got that as well? Cause I, it doesn't look as thick as what I have, or it looks thicker than what I have.
There, there may be some additional stuff. Yeah, I had requested this of Mary, um, actually at the end of the summer. And so, you know, we just gotten this fairly recently, so that's, that's a good.
I will be happy to pass it on.
If we could also have a balance sheet for the, um, sewer fund, I would appreciate it too. I think it's more clear on the general fund side, but I, I haven't gotten a recent, uh, balance sheet for the sewer fund side.
Okay, yep, no, I can pass it on. It was in the February, but that's fine. I can get it to everybody.
Okay, great. All right, well, thank you so much, Jeff.
All right, everybody have a good night.
Thanks, Jeff.
Take care, have a good evening.
Okay, back to fun times. Do, we wanna go back to my Excel or do you wanna look at my wage Excel sheet, Dan?
Oh, that's right, you were going to the wage sheet, weren't you?
Cause that's the only way I can show you the numbers that I.
Yeah, if, I, um.
Yeah.
If you got it in a view, it makes a lot of sense, then let's cover it, or we'll just do it at the next meeting. This, this isn't the last time we'll talk about it.
Let me pull it up here.
Excuse me one second, Lily, Lily's hands up. Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Um, yes, and you, you indicated an eighteen percent increase, and that is without. At least from what I'm seeing here, without an increase to trustees and, uh, mayor. Even the six point five, which you did across the board for employees, you did not apply that to the trustees and the mayor. Is that correct?
Um. I need to look at what I did. I gotta pull up the sheet. So. Okay, so here's the wage sheet. This is, let me shrink this a little bit. This is actually Mary's sheet, and these were adjusted to the wages that the board gave the raises to. So what I did is use six point five. Let me see what I did here. Nope, I did for the trustees as well, six point five. I just did across the board because, you know.
That was my question.
Yeah, I know it says proposed here two point five. I did not go with that, so. I think, like I said, this was Mary's sheet to start with. I just adapted it, added six point five as the cost of living. And these were per the raises that the board had given during the year. So that's where I think part of that difference, Dan, that you're finding is there. And I think the, also the increase in sewer is also reflective of me putting a portion of the trustees and the mayor's salary in there as well. That wasn't done in the past.
Okay, um, could you clarify that, uh, what that statement a little bit, Dorothea? May we ask, uh, may I ask anyway, to have, um, verification, uh, through either the state or, or. Wherever that verification would be appropriate to achieve, uh, that, with that as legal. That we are actually able to do that. Cause I think I've stated in the past that I thought we'd gone down that road before and already appropriated. As much as was legal, uh, from the sewer is, uh, applying towards salary. So I would like to make certain that we are not misstepping. And that that will be, um, researched and, and we will be assured that we're not doing something that's not correct.
Correct, and I did speak to our accountant. He said that is absolutely fine because you administer the sewer account. You make the decisions, you're a leading board, just like you do for the general fund. The sewer fund needs to pay for its labor, so you're part of that labor piece. It's very common.
Okay.
Yeah, I can tell you in Webster, we did the same thing with the water fund. The trustees and the mayor were paid a portion, you know, matter of fact, I think it was a fifty fifty split. Fifty percent came from water, fifty percent came from general fund to cover the cost of the water department. So this is done because you're, you're overseeing the.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I, I, the accountant, you know, the way he explained it, um, you know, in the, in that session is that sewer is a, is a department. And so it's, it's its own essentially a profit center. So whoever, whoever works in, in, in. In whatever capacity for the sewer department, maybe part time, maybe it's twenty percent of your time. That money, it should stand alone on its own as a separate profit and loss, almost, you know. That's how it was described by the accountant, that, um, you know, you don't just pull from a general fund. For someone who's working for another department, if it's sewer. You, you re, reallocate back, you prorate it back to whatever hours are spent. And it differs, I think, Dorothea, what you have different, uh, different prorated hours for people, for example, let's take, say, DPW.
Yep, if you look at the DPW, we're doing eighty-five fifteen.
Right.
Fifteen percent of the guy's time is working in the sewer, so that's appropriated to the sewer. You know, you look at. I'm just gonna pick James here, Michael James, this is our parking monitor. None of his time is spent in sewer, so we can't charge it to sewer. He's not doing sewer work.
Right.
So we're taking to the person, I can send the spreadsheet out to everybody, so you have it and you can play with it.
It's awful, because the accountant, the accountant really said this was best practice, that, you know, he really felt that this was far more an accurate reflection. Of the flow of, of money going through the village and what it was really used for. Yeah, Dan, you had your hand up, I think.
But, no, I was going to ask for the breakdowns and the justification of the percentages, but she's got it already. Um, on, on initial looking, I, I don't think we spend twenty-five percent of trustees and mayor time on sewer issues. I, I might be more inclined to leave more in the, in the general. Administration. I, I can't speak for the DPW, but twenty-five seems high on the amount of time that we spend.
That's fine, that's all, you know, this is just the initial proposal to the board and starting an accurate reflection. The point is the sewer fund should be self-sustaining for its needs and for the department.
And, and frankly, as mayor, I probably spend more time on the sewer than maybe the rest of the board does, you know, so maybe that would be split out a little bit differently than the rest of the board.
Yeah, that's, this is all, you know, workable.
Yeah, that, that's why it's tentative and that's why we're looking at it, so that's.
I think, Dan, I think the problem is looking at what was adopted last year, it changed significantly. So that's why those numbers are skewed from what I took.
Okay, so then, then I guess. What I wanna understand is the difference between our run rate now and the budgeted. what I want to understand is the difference between our run rate now and the budgeted, and the difference between our run rate now and the proposed, and, and that data is not quite here, do, do you see what I mean?
What I can do is see if I can locate the sheet with the number that was anticipated for the year in comparison to what it is now with the new data, um, it's not going to be a hundred percent, but I can get.
Yeah.
Maybe show the difference there.
Yeah, because in theory, we should only be six point five percent above what our current run rate is, but I, I just want to see that on a spreadsheet.
Right, let me see what I can do, because it's hard when, you know, like, I can point to one employee, no, we got two dollars more an hour, that is a significant impact as you go up all those salaries. Okay. Do we need the sheet anymore, or we good, I can send this up to you?
The last thing related to this, can you send us documentation just so we can justify it on, um, a six point five percent cost of living increase? It's, it's a big number.
Yep, no, I think that's the consumer index, I can go there and get that data for you.
And actually, you know, it's interesting, Dan, it's, if we're, uh, for the northeast region, it's broken out regionally, we were, um, lower than a lot of the other regions, I think we may even be the lowest region in terms of an increase, because, uh, I think it was in the Midwest, um, it was, you know, nine, nine point seven. You know, I mean, there was really a range, um, yeah, but I, I know Dorothea can grab that information for us.
Yep.
Would there be, was there a reason why the trustees and mayor were not adjusted to the six point five as was everything else across the board?
No, you were adjusted to the six point five.
All right, I'm looking at two point five, I'm sorry.
Yep, no, that was put in there and I should have took it out, it.
Okay.
Watch me, I'm changing.
There we go, thank you.
No, it was six point five, I did six point five across the board, I didn't feel any difference, I just threw it in there, because the board, at the end of the day, you're going to make decisions related to each individual person, what you want to do, or totally what you want to do for staff. This was just giving us an established rate, if we end up a little bit over, it gives us a little cushion in the lines in case anything changes during the year. This isn't set in stone in any shape or form, this is.
Suggestion.
It's a suggestion, I started with what the salaries are and what would be overall reflection if you went six point five.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any further need for the sheet?
I'm good.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. Did we want to go back to the budget sheet?
Sure.
Or. Okay, so we're back to the budget sheet. So where does the board want to go from here?
Have, I have a question real quick, um, on your budget spreadsheet, column I is tentative sewer breakout. Does that mean you've already pulled, so like, look at, um, equipment underneath clerk, and you've got thirteen seventy-five there.
I didn't pull it out.
Okay, so that, that thirteen seven five is still in the fifty-five hundred.
It's still in the budget, it's still there, I didn't change anything, I just, it's a suggestion, if we were to do a split with those departments, what it would look like. Um, I didn't want to automatically do it, because no point in that, I'm just providing that information, if the board was to adopt a percentage of what those, what sewer should, in my mind, be paying for, that's what it would look like.
Okay, and it's seventeen K, it's not a huge amount of money.
No, it is not, it is not going to break sewer in any shape or form.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Okay, um, so the board needs to review, continue reviewing the salary and make a decision there, I can get you the CPI, um. Is there another area the board wants to discuss?
Anything?
I will want to do the exercise around the ones that have changed the most, plus and minus, but I don't think we're there yet, we've got to get through the salary stuff first.
Okay.
Thanks.
Uh, mine wasn't on salary, but the, uh, I had a question about the sidewalk, um, projects we're talking about, it looks like that was up to forty thousand or so this year, which is, uh, quite a bit higher than prior years, and I believe we've discussed that a bit, wondered if anybody could give a recap of what the, uh, the project was there, and if we had kind of a, um, uh, a plan of which sidewalks needed to be addressed.
I covered that, though, I think it was the last time?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, recap chat, uh, Zach, sorry, I almost called you Jack.
Um, so, this is, uh, these two, two projects, uh, replacing sections of sidewalk on State Street. One section is on the north side of the road from Shane Place to the Village Line, and this section is about six hundred and fifty feet long, I think, I'm going off of memory, and, um, there are sections of it that are four feet wide, and there are sections that are broken up and kind of crumbled. So while, um, DOTs in doing all of their road projects throughout the village, I figured this would be a good time to address that. And that way, uh, you know, everybody's, uh, properties in that area are torn up once, and just this year, and put back together, and everybody can go back to living, uh, a normal life after everything's back together. Uh, the other section is on State Street, on the south side of the road between South Street and about this section, um. I, I, I put it up for replacement, because it was brought to my attention that one of the property owners is having issues with water runoff running back, um, toward their property, their property is the low point in that area, and water is pooling, um, up by their front steps, and their, their entire walkway from the sidewalk to the front steps is underwater, there's good water flow. So I think we had talked about looking into drainage options for this, uh, whether we put in DIs, um, or if, you know, it's just a matter of raising the sidewalk and pitching it. So water runoff would, uh, head toward the street or into the right of way. Um. I'm not sure what the best solution is to this, but this would probably, uh, take bringing in, um, Scott Harder and his team to take some adaptations and see if just repitching the sidewalk would be possible. So I put these, uh, these estimates together, um. One number would be on the cheap end of it, in which, um, we would tear everything out, meaning the existing sidewalk, in both the sections, and, um, we would do the restoration after a contractor came through and framed and poured the new sidewalk. And the restoration, I mean by, um, bringing, uh, topsoil and grass seed in and, uh, mulching it in straw, and any driveway rebating that would have to be done if, uh, the driveway was crumbling around the sidewalk and cannot be used as a, as a form for the concrete. Um, the higher side of the quotes would be for a contractor to come in and do the project from start to finish, that means tear out all the concrete, dispose of the concrete, um, cut everything back so they could get other forms in for the concrete, finish the concrete, and do all of the restoration work afterwards, bringing the, the project to a completion. Um. The one issue that I, I, I have, that we would have with, uh, the, the cheaper end of it, is because of the amount of concrete that would be excavated out of these areas. Um, we are limited on storage space and also getting rid of that concrete. We do have a, a con, not, we, we don't have a contract, we sometimes piggyback off of the town's contract to dump, um, concrete and other non-decomposing debris at Lehman's Farm, but I don't want to overstep our boundaries on that, because we don't have a contract. Um, so that's why there are two different prices for each section of that, of those projects.
Thank you, I, I do recall, uh, parts of that conversation, thank you for the refreshers, Zach, I appreciate it. I guess what I'm wondering here, too, kind of like with the vehicle purchases, I understand that these are, are your perspective of the most important things. Um, I'd like to approach getting towards kind of a multi-year plan, and, uh, I think before we started recording or right at the beginning of the meeting, I mentioned that, um, I think Frank had told me he had a, a sidewalk spreadsheet, um, and I wonder if there's anything like that around, if you have a copy of that, or if you could send us, you know, if, if we're making this decision about these sidewalks, that might be fine, but what else is in the pipeline so that we can establish an appropriate budget is, is my primary question, I guess.
Yeah, I think that's been a topic, just one second, that has been a topic of discussion, I mean, things have become a little skewed because of COVID, and, you know, not being able to complete things that maybe were scheduled, I think it's also affecting our, um, equipment schedule for DPW, and Dan, I know you'll be working with Zach on that as well. Um, but, uh, and also then the availability of materials has been an issue, so um, I agree, we all want to have those schedules and really be able to roll it out, but sometimes it's, it's, you know, at this point, it may not be picking it up where it left off.
Yes. Can I, can I add to this?
Oh, please do, no, I just wanted, because we had been talking about this, so.
Sure, and this, this, I had actually brought to the board last year as well, um, especially the section between, uh, Shane Place and the Village Line on the north side of, uh, State Street. Um, but the budget wouldn't allow it, so, um, again, putting a schedule together, um, is only helpful if we follow the schedule. Once everything starts to, to not get done per the schedule, um, you know, the, all the works tends to back up, and we're still, um, where we were five years ago. So, um, this is, this is something that has been on our radar, including the sidewalks on, on Wood Street. Um, but Wood Street is being held, or is, is, um, we're looking into an alternative for Wood Street, uh, as a whole project versus just either, uh, a resurfacing or a sidewalk project. So those two areas have been on my radar for a while. Um, but yes, we do have a sidewalk schedule.
Okay.
Yes, Justin.
Uh, related to, I'm not sure if this falls under the sidewalk budget, but trustee Lanfair on her, uh, email about budget items had mentioned the Shane Place, um, uh, Canal Embankment. Um, is that, where, where does that belong? I just want to make sure that we're not going to have to leave mon, uh, leave that in its current state due to lack of funds.
Yeah, I can give you an update on that, I was planning on doing it on Thursday, I can do it again as well on Thursday. Um, I, uh, had an all-day symposium, a canal symposium that I attended on Saturday. Um, I spoke directly with Brendan Simon, he's the Western Regional Engineer, who is engineering, um, the project um, for the restoration of that embankment. Um, it will be, um, solely to stabilize completely that section where we have the fencing now. Um, and that is out of their budget to do that, um, anything beyond that, um, we are, um, I'm already talking with and working with Canal Corporation for funding, because we are an LWRP, to maybe, you know, where we can all look at, you know, additional enhancements down there, but at least we're getting it stabilized and taken care of, so. And that's not coming, that's not funds from us, that is from the Canal Corp.
Do we have any written confirmation of that and, uh, timeline for when they might be able to do that work?
They're, they're going to be starting, um, we don't have the actual date, but it, the, the work is scheduled for early spring, they need to float a barge down, which is kind of cool, um, to do the job, so um, they're on their winter schedule now, um, where they're doing lock maintenance, and then they'll be switching over um, at some point, I don't know, Zach, if you've gotten, I don't think we've gotten a firm date yet from them, Zach?
No, this is all news to me, um.
Yeah, because I haven't had a chance to talk to you about the symposium, yeah.
Yeah, so two points to that, um, after the windstorm, uh, the fence was down again this morning, and every time that we pick it up, the fence tends to break apart a little bit more.
Yeah.
Um, so at this point, we've got it patched together well enough to hold.
Okay.
You know, we did was re, we set the buckets of concrete down off the edge of the, the, the path um, onto the bank, and I was going to include this in my, uh, my report for Thursday's meeting, but um, just to give you a heads up that when you guys go through there, the fence is going to be a little bit lower, and it's also going to be sitting on the bank because of that. It shouldn't blow over anymore at this point, because it's sitting on the bank and it's kind of resting up against the broken edge of the path. Um, but this, this is the issue that we're facing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely, yep, thank you for, for taking care of it.
Yeah, um, the other thing I guess would be is if they're starting this project in the spring, um, they've also got the, uh, regatta that they're going to have to be.
They, they recognize that, and they, they're, they're probably, they're either going to try to get it all done before or just after, I mean, they, they know about the regatta, they know about all of the events.
Oh, this is great, okay, so it is happening.
Yeah, it's happening.
Good, okay.
Yeah. Anything else? Folks? Well, we're almost to your hard stop, I think.
Thank you for the update on the canal, uh, at least, I appreciate it.
Yeah, no, I just found out on Saturday, you know, that they're, you know, they haven't forgotten about us, you know, but, um, the way it works, I mean, is, it, actually, the symposium was interesting, I'll just give you very quickly, um, you know, you kind of geek out on the canal for the entire day, let me tell you, but it's, it is interesting, and so, um, the canal, uh, you know, the, the engineers with the Canal Corporation do the bulk of their work as soon as the canal season is o- over, and then stop right before it begins again, you know, begins again, so they have this window where it is unbelievably compressed, you know, to get repairs done on the canal, um, and so we're, we're part of that, you know, we're, they, they have us in the hopper. Um, yeah, so that was the update from Saturday, yeah. Okay. So we have some action items moving forward, um, Dorothea, we can touch base tomorrow, make sure that, you know, whatever we need to distribute to the board gets out. Hope you're muted.
Actually, I'm going to say it's going to be Wednesday, I am, I will be working from home in the morning, but I'll be back on Wednesday, so I'll try to scan some things tonight and get it out to the board before I go.
Well, oh, heavens.
Wednesday's fine.
Heaven's Wednesday, come on.
Wednesday's fine.
A long day.
Yeah, Renee?
Um, I was just going to ask, um, Dan, what, uh, more do we need to prep to be able to discuss some of the personnel costs? And, um, moving forward on, on that, and if we need to have any individual sessions for just that piece of it?
Yeah. Um, I, I think Dorothy is going to come back with, um, list of, I, I think our current run rate is the piece of data that we don't quite have. And she's going to send around that spreadsheet that she put up with the increases plus the current run rate, that, I should be able to throw it in a spreadsheet and get everything we need, thank you for asking.
For the next meeting?
Yeah.
Or, or one, okay, great.
Okay, that's great.
And then at that point, we should be able to have the outlier conversation.
Mm-hmm.
Once we get through the personnel stuff, we should be able to.
Yeah, we'll have the more hard data for that.
Dorothy, I, I just wanted to chime in, I don't need these before Wednesday either, I, I understand these funds date back to the nineteen thirties and forties, they can definitely wait a couple days.
I don't want to give you, have some good reading, um.
I will. People read this.
Yes, I'll keep working on the, but, you know, as I get more estimates and I'll send them, I'll edit to the next packet, um, any other amendments, is there anything really sewer and everything is just as for a shot, um, but the real quick, as I go back to the sewer, is the board in a tentative agreement, I shouldn't be funding this reserves until we resolve the reserves?
I, I, I agree with that, I think that that's, that's really fiscally prudent to not put any more money into reserve that may or may not exist, or that we can't access the money.
And then I'll bring, talk to the borough board as you're thinking about this on Thursday, as to doing a budget amendment and moving what is tended to be funded this year for these reserves into contingency, so it can go back into fund balance, is that makes sense to the board as well?
I mean, I think that's a pretty practical way to go.
Okay.
Would, would that be the sewer fund balance, or would that be the general fund balance?
Sewer, it's totally sewer.
It's sewer.
Just sewer.
Thanks.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Anybody?
Second, I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call, um, trustee Stutzer?
I.
Hold on. Okay, wow, hit the wrong button, sorry, um, trustee Stutzer?
I.
Trustee Lanfair?
I.
Trustee like him?
I.
Trustee Keating?
I.
Mayor Plummer?
I.
Motion passes, thank you, everybody, if there's anything else we need, let me know.
Thanks, everybody, thanks, Dorothea, good night, everybody.
Thank you.